So I'm going to call the Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, meeting of the Esalen Metal Planning Board to order. The first item of business is to call the poll. So present are.
Cassandra Cheriswol.
Russell Denver.
Bill Fonseca.
Robert Rock.
Pete Henderson.
All right. Second item is I'm asking if there's anyone in the audience or by Zoom who might be recording this meeting. Would you, if so, please state your name and the method you're using to record the meeting? I will ask one more time if there's anyone in the audience or by Zoom who is recording this meeting. And if there is, please state your name and the method in which you are recording the meeting. Hearing none, I would ask for approval of the April 2nd, 2024 open session minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Okay. First item of business, Mr. Clerk.
Case SD-D-2023-01, request for consideration of performance bond certi and covenant for Oakwood Estates applicant, Thomas L. Beretta, 32 Eastwood Drive, Wilbraham, Mass. 01095.
And I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to kind of just tell where we're at with it.
Sir, thank you. I'm under the impression that Mr. Beretta and his legal representation are not here tonight because they are waiting for final approval of their letter of credit. So they kindly asked that this be taken up at the next meeting.
Motion to continue?
It's not a public hearing, so tabling, I think, is fine.
Okay. So someone make a motion to table this item?
Someone will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one is opposed, so that matter passes. Mr. Clerk?
Public hearings, case SP-2024-03, request for special permit for Beth's daycare, a home-based family daycare operation at 28 Powder Hill Road, assessors parcel ID 5-17-18, located in the RB zoning district. Applicant Beth Dunbrecht, 28 Powder Hill Road, Esalen Metal, Mass. 010.
So is the petitioner here? Can you please come in, sign in, please?
Sarah, there should be a pen there.
I'll see one.
Sorry.
Okay, I get a motion to open this public hearing?
Opened.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So thank you for submitting everything, but for the people in the audience who may know nothing about this or the people who are on LCAT watching, let me tell us what you're trying to get with from the planning board this evening and a little bit about the business, how long it's been operating, hours of operation, number of children, et cetera.
Um, I run a home daycare that's licensed with the state out of my home. I've been running for, it'll be two years next week or the week after, actually, that I obtained my license. I'm just trying to get my business license so that I'm operating legally. I run from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, closed holidays. I have six children in care right now, one being my son. I will have seven over the summer. My license is for six and two school age. Obviously, transportation is weird, so I only offer summer care for the, for the school age children. I've been working in education for 20 years, professional settings. I worked at Kinder Care in Long Meadow. I have an associate's in early ed. I have a bachelor's in biology from Elms College, and I have my master's from AIC in education.
Before I open it to the public, does anyone have any questions with the petitioner? Thank you very much. If anyone in the audience or by Zoom that would like to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or come forward if you're in the audience. Say again, anyone wish to be heard on this matter, please step forward or raise your hand by Zoom. Seeing no one on Zoom and no one in the audience, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. So the public hearing is closed and on the, on the issue of.
Let's have a closing public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah. Motion to close the public hearing?
They did that. Okay.
Now I'm calling for the vote. Now I'm calling for the vote. Thank you. What a team we have here. I like it. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for Beth's daycare located 28 Powder Hill Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Item passes. Thank you.
Very much.
Mr. Clerk?
It's in our teaching ones.
Yeah, I know.
My goodness. Case SP-2024-04, request for special permit for the Healing Coop, a massage therapist facility at 280 North Main Street, assessors parcel ID 14-12-F, located in the commercial zoning district applicant Seska Cote, 98 Bear Road, Esalen Metal, Mass. 01028.
I'll just. If the petitioners in the audience, would you please step forward or by Zoom? Okay, before we do that, so I'll make, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I just lost the sound for a minute while I got asked to be a co-panel person. So I'm Saskia Cote, owner of the Healing Co-op. We, I'm like to do bodywork, holistic medicine, and I would like to add massage therapy as well. So I'm requesting a permit for that. We're commercially zoned, and there's already other massage therapists in the building. And it's just therapeutic massage.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience like to be heard on this matter? Or anyone in Zoom like to be heard on this matter? I'll ask again if there's anyone in the audience or by Zoom that might be heard on this matter. Hearing none. Any other further questions from the board? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move.
Do I have a second? Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one opposed? On the main item, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the special permit for the Healing Coop, a massage therapist facility at 280 North Main Street.
Good.
As presented.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed. Thank you. You're all set. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Right. Case Site-2024-04, request for site plan review approval of the demolition of the existing Esalen Metal High School and construction of a new high school building, associated parkways, driveways, parking driveways, utilities, and field at 180 Maple Street. Assessors parcel ID 17-33-10, located in the RB zoning district applicant Tom Christensen, 60 Center Square, Esalen Metal, Mass. 01028.
But you're not Tom Christensen, but that's okay. You can come in. So do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we're open the public hearing. I think if I could just give some words of advice on this. Certainly, this issue has been heavily debated and it's been acted on. So I don't think that we need to get into on whether the school is the proper size or what's going into the school. I, I think the, the issue are on just the site plan items that are properly before this board. Okay. I mean, it's passed and it's moving forward, and so I don't think we need to debate any of that.
So we do have a presentation that just goes through.
Okay.
Site and.
General.
Then just general.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
We should turn our chairs, or?
Not sure why this.
Well, nice school. Pretty nice school. There we go.
Right. Oh, good evening. My name's John Hart. I'm a civil engineer with SMMA, and we are. Group is proud to be here and presenting your projects, high school project. Tom Christensen, applicant, town manager and school building committee member, Dory Brooks. Behind me with Joan Winslet Architects, the prime designer for the project and architect. Eric Bagness, our landscape architects with SMMA, and Esalen Metal High School graduate. Myself, civil engineer with SMMA, Cameron St. Croix, civil engineer, Greg Lucas, and Matthew Stotz from Ty &amp; Bond, our traffic engineers. And then Mark Hogan, I saw, didn't see his name, but there with the construction manager, Fontaine Brothers. And. We're going to go through just overall site design, what's, what's in the program of the school. On the exterior, just touch on zoning and the project phasing. And then through, Dory's going to talk about architecture, the building, and I'll touch on the site utilities and stormwater, and then go through the traffic and then open for questions.
So I'm going to ask you to change this agenda.
Okay.
Move traffic after site design.
Okay.
I know there are people in the audience who are here because they're most concerned about traffic. So I'd like to make sure that we address that.
Okay.
Okay.
Eric, do you want to?
Do you want the big plans running on the table for reference?
Do you want the big plans in front of you? Thank you.
Thank you, John. My name is Eric Bagness, landscape architect with SMMA. Before we get into the proposed site land, site plan, we'd just like to take a second and step back for a minute just to review the campus, reintroduce the campus in context with its surroundings. So the existing campus is over 60 acres. It is about just, just over three quarters of a mile to the west of town center. It's bordered to the north by Maple Street and residential neighborhoods, to the west by residential neighborhoods, to the south by residential neighborhoods and industrial businesses, and to the east by resource areas, the Redstone Rail Trail and St. Michael's Parish. As you can see today on Maple Street, there are three points of access, two somewhat opposite Melwood Avenue. That's the primary entrance to the site that brings you to the front door of the school, which you can see is highlighted by the red dot. And that's what we call the horseshoe. There is an entrance at the northeast corner of the campus. And there is also a secondary entrance at the southwest corner of the campus, which is basically an extension of Norden Street. And that provides access for district office employees and visitors. Also, some of the smaller school buses and vans use that rear entrance, as do custodial staff and also services and deliveries. Right now, large deliveries like tractor trailers typically pull into the main parking lot that you see there and unload from there because they just can't make, make it through those, those residential neighborhoods. So you can see the existing building in the heart of the property. It's an expansive building. That, what's interesting is if you look from Maple Street at the existing building, it really cuts off the view to the rest of the campus because it stretches so far from west to east. To the east, the opening are the existing tennis courts, and of course, to the south and to the west are natural turf athletic fields. And then we have the existing stadium with the synthetic turf and field and track over to the east. That large parking lot serves both visitors, or excuse me, serves visitors, faculty and staff, and students. And it's hard to see in this image, but there's a red line that's painted across that parking lot. And that's really the only means of delineating the faculty and staff parking from the student parking. So again, just wanted to kind of give everyone a kind of brief overview of the existing campus. Now, as we get to the proposed site plan, so we, we spent two year, we've spent the last couple of years developing this site plan based on a wealth of input that we've received from both the district, the school staff and faculty and interest groups, as well as interest groups from the larger community. So what you'll notice and what parts of this that I would like to highlight tonight is, so what we've done is access. One of the repeated comments that we heard throughout the design process was the concern about the mixing of school bus traffic and parent pickup and drop off. Now, we typically like to separate those. So one of the primary features of this site plan is, is to do just that. It is to separate the parent pickup and drop off from the school bus pickup and drop off. So as you can see, we have consolidated the two entrances to what was the horseshoe to one single entrance opposite Melwood Avenue, and that will bring in a new drop off loop that comes to the new front door of the school. Now, the school is going to be located to the south and the east of the existing building, so it'll be a little bit further away from Maple Street. That parent drop off loop will come right to the front door. We're going to use the northeast entrance. We're going to improve that, and we're going to use that for the school bus drop off that will bring students right out to the front. You can see sort of at the northeast corner of the school. Then you can also see the pool building that is attached to the proposed school at the northern, at the northern edge there. So we're going to have separate, separate parent drop off and pickup from the school buses. We also have parking distributed throughout the site, so, and, and better separated. So we're going to have faculty, staff, and visitor parking out front, as you can see, just to the north of the school. We're going to have a lot to the left, or to the west, I should say, that will provide parking for district offices, LCAT, and visitors, and, and potentially some staff as well. And then we have a large student, student parking lot that you can see, separate from the others. And then to the east of the building, we have parking along that eastern driveway. The northern bay of parking will be, can be used by the community for the pool building. And then we have some parking that, that will service, or provide parking for custodial staff and people, services and deliveries. So what we've done at Norden Street, one of the opportunities we saw at the beginning of this project is, like I said, when you look from Maple Street right now, the building obscures your view, and it's a, it's a massive green space. It's a wonderful green space that works with the town center fields and heritage park to really provide a valuable community resource. And what's interesting about this property is its primary function, and I want to stress that, its primary function is for the school and administers during the school's education program, also their athletic program and events such as graduations, you know, competitions, things of that nature. But this site also is a valuable community resource, and there are a lot of community events that happen here that needed to be accommodated as part of the program, things like the Summer Concert Series, Fourth of July fireworks, Fourth of July parade, which uses that parking lot also as a staging area, not just as a beginning. So these are some of the events, you know, recreational sports, things of that nature. It had to be incorporated, understanding though, that again, the primary function of this is the high school. But what we really wanted to do was, we wanted to sort of reveal that open space to people when they enter the site. So now you can see the primary entrance, as you enter in, the view with the building being shifted to the east is going to open up views into this large open space that's going to contain the relocated and reconfigured athletic fields, which I will get to in a minute. As you can see, to the north of the pool building, there's two tennis courts. Two, at the northeast corner of the site would be the relocated six tennis courts, and the existing stadium will remain, although it will be improved. And again, I'll, I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. So zooming in, so this is the area around the school. So you can see that both of these separate drop offs are actually going to be connected by and serviced by one main entry plaza. And there'll be seating out there, hardscape, trees. It'll be a very, very nice space for kids to wait for pickup or wait for the school bus or when they arrive. It'll be a very, very welcoming place. It'll serve as the front door and a real, add a sense of arrival when you get to the front of the school. To the west, on the west side of the school, we'll have a small pre-K play area. We'll also have an arts terrace. It's going to have some outdoor spaces for outdoor learning and outdoors, outdoor display. On the south side of the building, we're going to have an outdoor dining terrace with a shade structure. Actually, shade incorporated into the building and a, a separate structure to the south. And then at the southeast corner, we have a sciences outdoor learning space adjacent to the greenhouse. One of the other features of this site plan that we're very excited about is that we have cut off Norden Street and that connection, given the fact that the building's so far to the east now, that's, that connection really didn't seem to make sense anymore. And it disrupted that contiguous open space that we showed you in the previous, in the previous slide. So what we've done is cut off Norden Street, and we've reoriented the loading dock to face east towards undeveloped land and sort of tucked into this cove of the building. And this will mitigate noise and visual impacts that currently the, you know, neighbors of some of the abutting residential streets look into. And so the terminus of Norden Street is now just going to be a three accessible spaces and a little hammerhead for turnaround so people don't, aren't encouraged to turn around in residential driveways. There will also be gated access for emergency vehicles to access the athletic fields if necessary. And it's a little cut off. I'm sorry about that. Down at the bottom here, you can see that there will be 360 degree emergency access around the perimeter of the building. Just a couple of highlights that we wanted to bring to your attention. So these are, you know, by no means vital, but these are some working rendering showing what, you know, the, some of these spaces may look at. So the largest image you can see to your left is the, the arrival, kind of the design for the arrival as you, you, you come to the front of the, the main entrance to the school. You can see there'll be a generous outdoor plaza area, and that will be a flush condition. So when kids get out of their car, they don't have to worry about tripping on a curb. We use bollards and flush curb instead. Also makes it a little bit easier for snow removal. And you can see some of the seat walls that we're proposing in there. The, don't concern yourself too much with the exterior of the building of this. Dory will get into maybe a little bit more of the detail afterward about the exterior finishes of the building. This is really just to show massing, so these aren't the, necessarily the proposed finishes. We want to, you know, Esalen Meadow is, as I grew up here, it's, it's an interesting tale of two towns in some respects because it's got an industrial developed core, which we sort of relate the school to in this image, but it's also got the history of the quarrying. So we took, took advantage of that idea by creating a bio-retention area. You can see just on the left side of the screen, that's going to have a weathered, weathered steel bridge crossing, which will allow the kids to interact with that space. They don't hold water for more than 72 hours. It's really more just like a lush green area that manages stormwater at the surface as opposed to just bringing it underground. So that's a, that's what we're thinking for the arrival of the front door. And then just some of these other images of the, on the right side, you can see that's an image of the outdoor arts learning environment. Seat walls and hardscape, low maintenance materials. We, we've, you know, placed an emphasis on that. The outdoor dining terrace, you can see with its shade structure planted, south side of the building. And then the outdoor sciences in the, in the lower right-hand corner. You can see again, just seat walls, permanent seating, a mixture of permanent and, and more furnishings that, that students can move around and use the, use the spaces in a, in different ways. We like to make those spaces adaptable so that we're not telling teachers and students how to use them. And then just to get into athletics, so the athletics demands are high on this site. So what we did is at the beginning, we inventoried all the fields. And what we can tell you is effectively, we've, we're going to be giving you back what you have with the exception of one outfield overlay field that's in the existing varsity baseball field because the varsity baseball field's now going to be fenced. We are also, we heard input from the community that right now the varsity JV softball have to go to the middle school. So there was a strong desire to bring softball to the high school to accompany baseball. And we agreed, we felt that was the right thing to do, so we've incorporated two softball fields to go along with the two baseball fields here. And we've, we've got a small area for javelin and for practice over to the right. But you can see with the fields here, we, we put back the JV football, soccer and boys lacrosse, soccer and girls lacrosse. And then we'll still have that one outfield overlay. Those tend to be helpful, especially for rec programs and practices. So that's the natural turf athletic fields.
Can you go back?
Yeah, of course.
The very end. Accessible routes to fields and courts.
Yes.
So what's the distance between your parking, your main, where you've got staff and students to any of these fields?
Yep. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but to give you an idea, from home plate to the left field, outfield fence on the varsity baseball field is 315 feet. So again, the, the intent here was to, the intent here was to create a large contiguous open space. So what we've done is we've located accessible parking in that small lot to the west of the building. And our thought was that the accessible parking at the, in the staff lot that you'll, that you can see up there and in that western lot can service, let's say, the varsity softball and baseball field and maybe the JV football field. Whereas the spaces at the end of Norden Street could also service the JV baseball, the JV softball. And there is, you can see that path that, that goes around the perimeter. Each field has an accessible route to it. That's a, that's a very important thing in modern athletic field design is that you have a paved, firm, stable walkway that gets people to each field.
So I'm not, I'm not debating, and if I miss something, please tell me. But I thought you just said that you're discontinuing Norden Street in. So what parking is there to be able to access those fields?
It's, it's just going to be, it's just going to be the three accessible parking spaces, the.
Three there and 30 to the west of the building. I counted 30, maybe less. 30?
West of the building, there's, it's okay. There's 39 total spaces, and there are three accessible spaces in that lot as well.
Okay.
And then four accessible spaces at the front door, which again, will have walkways that cross that entrance drive to get you to the fields as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to piggyback, so if I have JV softball on a Saturday, all the fields are packed. There's not much parking, or I'm going to have to park in that main lot, walk the pathways all the way around?
You didn't make me.
Calling up.
Yeah, so there were some, there were some concerns by the, by the, from the neighboring communities about large quantities of vehicles going through those neighborhoods to access the fields and speeds going in and out of those areas. And again, given the, given the desired athletics program on this site, we really could not extend pavement too far into the site because it just took up room that, you know, was needed for fields and their buffer spaces and, and things of that nature. So yes, we, we are trying to keep parking to the outside of these fields, and we did not want to put a lot of parking at the end of Norden Street because we really only wanted that to be accessible. We didn't want that to be felt as a parking lot.
Yeah.
And then over at the east end of the site, this is just an enlargement that again, shows we're going to be relocating that throwing wall, that existing throwing wall, that's going to be relocated to within the stadium limits. It's going to maintain the same exact orientation that it has now. It's just going to be relocated to make way for that service drive there with the parking. And then we'll have existing shot put and discus will remain. The track and field will remain. We are proposing a new concessions building, which you can see in the upper left corner of the stadium. We're also proposing a brand new press box with an accessible ramp system that'll get you from at grade up to that press box. It'll maintain its current elevation above finished grade, though. And you can see the two basketball courts positioned between bus drop off and the, and the service drive. And then the six tennis courts. And on the six tennis courts, we're going to, on the southern bay of courts, we're going to stripe six pickleball courts. And then the six tennis courts and on the six tennis courts, uh, we're gonna, on the southern bay of courts, we're going to stripe six pickleball courts. Because pickleball was, has been very popular in the community. We expect that to continue and there was a strong desire to, to incorporate that. And that would have portable nets as opposed to permanent nets like the tennis courts do.
Are you replicating the same number of parking spaces as you currently have between staff? The new staff and the students.
It, it's a little, so right now we are proposing a total of four hundred and sixty four parking spaces. The, the actual quantity of parking spaces on the existing site. It's, it's around five hundred. It might be give or take because we've got some areas that maybe aren't striped. That can accommodate parking and some, but, but four hundred and sixty four spaces. There's over two hundred and eighty spaces in that, in that student lot. And there's a hundred and six spaces in that front lot and, you know, we were looking at. You know, a hundred to somewhere between a hundred to a hundred and fifty for all faculty and staff combined. So we have a hundred and six at the, at the front. We've got thirty nine to the, to the west. That will also incorporate LCAD, of course, and, and IT and district offices. And then we have more spaces to the east. So we've, we've sort of taken that number, but we've distributed it around the building. Not into one big giant, you know, tarmac of a lot, you know, that like what's out there today. And again, to get that, to get that desired separation. So I'm not one hundred percent sure exactly how many existing parking spaces are allocated to staff. And faculty right now, but again, we try to hit that target.
Okay.
And, you know, we're, we're not too far off from what's out there today.
Thank you.
I think. I think that's pretty much it on the athletics. The only thing I'd just note is that, you know, during a, a large event or like a. You know, a varsity game or something, a competition on that field. The entrance, the, the new concessions building is going to be located right near the, the existing entrance to the stadium. And so you can see we put a nice large crosswalk. We're going to direct people there. There's sidewalks in throughout the campus. All of them will be accessible, you know, brings people into the campus, gets people through. All of the, all the various site elements via accessible walkways.
Yes. But just to touch quick on, on it, with the. Large site over sixty acres and. The building being centrally located to the site. All the setbacks from front rear sides are all nets. Building height is a few feet less than the maximum allowed of forty five. Lot coverage is, is under the allowable as well. There. For educational use. Abutting residential, there is a twenty foot. Landscape buffer. Where that, where butts residences and there is twenty feet of landscape. In some cases, it's, it's lawn. But that is goes around the site. The only places where it doesn't is where the access to the two access systems of the street. Are and also, you know, the, the little hammerhead from Norton Street. Glad to get into any zoning questions. And then just quickly phasing of the construction and then we'll go to traffic. So this is the initial phase that will start this summer. And the construction initially starts with really the, the building and the foundation of the building. Getting going in back of the existing school. Access will be off of Maple Street on the left side of the horseshoe, the west side. And it will go around, around the building to the west and then come into that back area. There'll be a little work done in the back area of the building. Between the fences. Of the construction fence between the, the new and the old school. So this will be the area that'll be fenced off and used in the enabling phase and then for the beginning of phase one. And there'll be temporary parking in that horseshoe in front, the shaded area in the, in the middle of the horseshoe. That's temporary parking that will be built from the beginning. And then as we go on in phase one, still the construction of the building being the main focus. That whole area to the south of the building will be contractor parking and. Lay down area for materials and so forth. Again, the access around the west side of the building. And in the summer of twenty twenty five, it'll expand up to the northeast to. To construct the, the new parking lot. And that'll be done during, during the summer. And then phase three, once the building's complete. It'll switch over and the building will then be in use and the new parking lot will be in use. And that whole right side, east side of the site will be used by students and the parking up there. And then the existing building will be demolished and the fields finished. And then the, the, the loop at the front of the building will be, you know, come in from Maple Street over where the existing building is.
What school year are you expecting that? Excuse me? What school year were you expecting that? The new building to be used? Twenty six?
Twenty twenty six. And we're gonna skip to.
You go ahead and start. You go ahead and start. Hi, I'm Matt Stouts. I'm the traffic engineer from Time Bond. And we were tasked with conducting a traffic study to evaluate. Potential traffic impacts to the local roadway network as a result of the new school. So our study area includes the five intersections circled in yellow on the aerial to the right. Which includes the three site driveways, the entrance, the exit. And the eastern most near the sports fields. As well as the two intersections at Marshall Street and Melwood Avenue. So we started out by collecting traffic volume data. So we collected turning movement counts at those intersections during the arrival and dismissal periods. Which lined up with the start and end of the school day and also aligned with the before and after school activities. We also collected speed and volume data on Maplewood Road. And so we found that our eighty fifth percentile speeds, which is like also the operating speed of the roadway. Were around forty miles per hour and this compared to thirty five miles per hour for the posted speed. And also traffic volumes on Maple Street were about ten thousand vehicles a day. We next conducted a safety review for the previous six years available data. And based on that review, we didn't find any concerning patterns. There were two crashes that involved the pedestrian or cyclist. So we took that into account when we were designing our improvements on Maple Street.
There were eighteen in total over six years?
Yes, that's correct.
Two collisions, two pedestrian, but, or, or the other?
Oh, well, sorry, one, one bicyclist, one pedestrian.
Okay.
Then the remaining sixteen were just vehicle versus vehicle or vehicle versus a fixed object on the side of the road.
And did you determine times of day that were most frequent with those accidents?
Yeah, we, so we did look at that and that is in our study, there weren't any specific time periods of the day. I, I think you're probably asking, did they happen during dismissal arrival? And there, you know, they weren't like overwhelmingly during those periods.
Well, how many were and how many weren't?
I, I, off the top of my head, I did not know, but I can, I can get that information.
That would be relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we really wanted to, you know, look into safety as part of the new school. Cause we know there were, I was out there at the site and I, I saw a lot of near misses. And as part of the study, we wanted to see those existing, existing issues and what we can do as far as the new school to fix. Some of those current issues. So we, yeah, like I said, I was out there during arrival and dismissal periods. You know, watching kids getting dropped off at school buses, parent drop off. You know, kids crossing at the existing pedestrian signal. You know, at the other eastern driveway, how they were getting out of the school grounds that way. So this was done during the arrival and the dismissal. And then next, also looked at the access and circulation on site. As Eric said, right now buses and parent drop off are all in the main loop. And then, you know, students park over and staff park over in the eastern larger driveway. Sort of seeing what we can do to improve upon that existing condition. So using our data that we collected, we conducted a traffic operations analysis using software. And so we looked at two scenarios during the morning and the afternoon periods. And the, the first was in twenty twenty two, which is our existing condition. Under the current driveway configuration. And this was during our schematic design phase when the project got going. So that's why, now, now we're in twenty twenty four, but that's why we looked at twenty two, twenty two then. And then the second scenario is in the future, when the school will be fully opened. The new driveways will be constructed and things will be operating how they are proposed. And that was projected to be twenty twenty seven. So during both existing and future conditions, we generally found acceptable operations. And as traffic engineers, we look at in A to F scale, A being the best and F being the worst. So generally we were seeing Cs and Ds, which is widely considered acceptable. There was one instance where we were seeing failing operations in the future condition. And that was at the school driveway. So now, now you have the consolidated school driveway opposite Melwood Avenue. And this was during the, the AM peak hour. But there's, the driveways were designed so that they can accommodate. The queued vehicles that are stacked up. So it really only amounts to being four or five vehicles that you end up. Seeing stacked up. And it's important to note that this is, you know, during the period when parents are leaving the school to drop off their kids. The very short, quick fifteen minute period of time that dissipates pretty quickly. Under the existing and the, and the future condition.
And, and doesn't impede through traffic on Maple Street.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the operations on Maple Street.
What about the inherently dangerous coming from Long Meadow?
Yep.
You're coming up the rise, over the rise, down into that, you know, to where the entrance would be?
Yep.
Just said that you're at eighty five percentile, which meant that it's probably five. The average was five miles per hour over the normal. Are you anticipating requesting dropping the speed limit?
We, we will get to that.
Say yes or no?
Discuss that in a.
Thank you.
The next couple of slides.
Okay.
We, but I, I'll just note on the speeds, that speed data was collected on the straightaway to the east of this driveway shown on the screen here. So you do get higher speeds in that area. And actually where the proposed driveway is located now, it's actually in a better spot than it, the entrances now. It's located further east from the crest vertical curve. So we're actually like, we tried to, we looked at different options and locating the driveway and we found that was the. The optimal location where drivers have the best sightline. You know, watching for students and, and cars exiting the driveway and Melwood Avenue.
I just want to add for any presenter tonight, so we're asking questions because the public wants us to ask questions?
Yep.
Not we're picking you apart. We're asking questions because the public wants to know.
And I, I guess I just want to know the, with our operations analysis, so as Eric was showing on the site plan. The whole site was kind of reconfigured. We closed Norwood down to the southwest. So we, we, we looked into moving that traffic to the main driveway to accurately depict. How it's gonna, where people are going to be headed to and from under the future school condition. And then next we looked at whether a traffic signal would be warranted. Right now, that traffic signal in the photo there, it's only pedestrian signal. It's, you know, it's only going to go red on Maple Street and the walk signal will, will go on when a pedestrian comes up and pushes a button. Vehicles don't have any signal heads facing them, so they're, they're not controlled by the signal head on the side street. Or the driveway. So it's really just on Maple Street unless a, a pedestrian pushes, pushes the button. So as part of that warrant analysis, the MUTCD, which is the manual. On uniform traffic control devices has warrants. That will help you to determine if a traffic signal is justified or not. And these, these aren't set in stone. It helps you make an informed decision to justify the need for a traffic signal. So we looked at two warrants when we conducted this analysis. The first was a pedestrian volume warrant. So this is just really based on the number of pedestrians crossing. At near, at or near the driveway. And we did find that the pedestrian volume warrant was met under the existing and the proposed condition. But typically we look for whether the vehicular warrants are met. So this means that either during a four hour or eight hour span. You have to hit certain volume thresholds in order to justify. A traffic signal. So this. With the school generating a lot of side street traffic during short periods throughout the day. And, and it really doesn't have the sustained volumes you need during those longer time periods. We found that the traffic signal was not warranted at the consolidated school driveway under the future condition. We also looked at it under the existing condition as well and found that it wasn't warranted.
That was a little circular, your description there. You said it is flexible, so we have an existing. You know, light there. That can, can that be reused in some type of new reconfig, new reconfiguration of the entrance?
So I think I'm going to pass it over to Greg because he's going to get into the.
Yeah, we're going to talk about the improvements and also the condition of that existing signal. For the record, my name is Greg Lucas with Time Bond.
Go ahead. Just the chair, I guess, so. You said during those extended four hour timeframes, but certainly with drop off and pickup. Would it, would those numbers warrant a light?
Uh, no. So, yeah, because it was, it was such a short period of time, we did not hit those, those thresholds.
So between seven o'clock and eight o'clock, the amount of traffic would not warrant. The amount of traffic on Maple or coming out of the school after drop off would not warrant. Under the guidelines you talked about, it wouldn't warrant a light?
Are, right, so you look at a.
One hour period.
So we don't, we don't look at a one hour period in, in a vacuum? We, we did collect, so we collect.
I'm looking at it in, in a vacuum.
I mean, it does not warrant it.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you again. For the record, Greg Lucas from Time Bond. So first, since it's clearly a point of interest, I'll talk about that existing pedestrian signal. And so the existing pedestrian signal. One thing that we noticed when we went out and did site observations is that. Although the pedestrian volumes, as Matt mentioned, do meet a warrant for signal. although the pedestrian volumes, as Matt mentioned, do meet a warrant for signalization, pedestrians aren't consistently, school kids, school kids aren't consistently using that signal. They're crossing without pressing the button or they're pressing the button and they're crossing without waiting for the signal because there's gaps in traffic, so they can safely do that. So it's not operating as efficiently as it could. Um, another condition, another issue is that the condition of it, it's older, it's in poor condition. It's a consistent maintenance concern for the town. Um, and then the third, the third issue that we considered is once the driveway is consolidated and the exit driveway is relocated to the west, now where that signal is located, if you were exiting and you're making your turn, you're at an intersection, you're coming out of the driveway, the new driveway is opposite Melwood Ave. You're turning right out of that driveway and there's a little bit of distance before you get to that signal. And those drivers may not be expecting to make that stop. Now, still, it's a signal and if it's red, they're supposed to stop, but it's a less safe condition because of the distance. It's more logical where it's placed today next to the driveway. So now, the other question, and you asked this, was what could it be relocated? And because of the condition of it, probably not. And so now you get into a question of if you're relocating it, you're probably replacing it. And so now you're replacing it at the intersection and now we need to evaluate those warrants that we just talked about, which aren't met. And so you could, the pedestrian signal wouldn't control traffic on the side streets. And we wouldn't have indications for the school driveway or Melwood Avenue to show them what the patrol is based on traffic. So what is instead proposed is RFBs, um, rapid rectangular flashing beacons. You see at the right, a diagram that shows a typical intersection with RFBs on what in this case would be Maple Street on both sides approaching the intersection. Those, and I I believe they exist elsewhere in town, although I'm I'll admit I'm not from this area, so I don't know exactly where they're located.
Where Tom, where?
Yeah, I was gonna say the trail.
Okay, so just so people have an understanding of what those are. And that's a push-button actuated device that accompanies the pedestrian warning sign and has a beacon that flashes in a wig wag pattern back and forth. The rapid comes from in the name is the rapid flashing um to alert drivers that there is something there. The warning sign already alerts them that there's a crosswalk. The RFB alerts them that there might be something actively happening, and of course, the pedestrian requires them to stop. That's state law. And so this alerts drivers and because of the relocation of the crosswalks, you see on the diagram where the green arrows are, um, really kind of formulates this as an intersection. Where today, the school driveways are separated, they're offset from Melwood Ave. There, the school exit driveway is close to the pedestrian signal, but but none of the other entrances and exits in Melwood Ave are not. Um, this consolidates it as an intersection with crosswalks on both sides, RFBs for approaching traffic on both sides. Um, there isn't an RFB facing school driveway or Melwood Avenue. Reason for that is because Matt had mentioned the manual uniform traffic control devices, which defines how we can use these devices. Um, isn't appropriate on stop-controlled intersection. A stop-controlled intersection is the same as anywhere else. You come up, you stop at the intersection, you go to make your turn. There's a pedestrian there. You can't make that turn. You have to safely allow them to pass. So that's the intended control of the intersection and what's shown here. Um, the two crosswalks that are circled in red will be removed. They'll be um, they'll be covered up in the center line restored through them um with the crosswalks consolidated to the new driveway, as I mentioned, creating an intersection.
That's quite a, so there's, so going off for us this question earlier, so there's that sidewalk on this west side, I think of this one here. That one's going away. Is there a driveway there? Help me remember, or is it just now in the center where the green lines are? Is that the only entrance that I?
That's the only entrance. It's consolidated. The, what you see next to those red circles are the existing driveways that would be removed. So they're all consolidated to the center.
So there's no, there's no, there's no fact that that is.
No driveway.
Yeah, right, exactly. So.
That seems considerably further down from that hill, because he's right, coming over that hill is spicy.
That was, that was part of it.
And it's an immediate down.
Right, consolidating it and formulating it in section, um, you know, helps that issue.
Right.
Did you guys consider putting a rotary? I'm just kidding.
Hang on, this slide, are you putting the striping on Melwood Ave? Is that accurate indication?
What's that?
Are you proposing actually putting the striping on Melwood Ave down the middle of the street?
No, no, that's just the diagram. Um, that isn't specifically proposed.
And then the curb cuts here on Melwood, you're not proposing adding any sidewalks there? It would be existing as is.
No, no, we wouldn't. There aren't any sidewalks proposed on Melwood.
How about, um, like no parking signage on Melwood?
It certainly could be added.
I think, I think it's gonna.
I think, so I live on Melwood.
Okay.
Sure, right at the top of the street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and right now, we have a traffic problem with my school. And we have people who park on both sides of the street. And then you have cars trying to sneak through the middle to get down. And then you have the kids that have crossed the street trying to get to those cars, running through the active traffic. There's no one watching it. It's a mess.
Hmm.
This looks like it could add to the mess as well. If there's still people parking there as they are now, waiting for their kids to come out. So I think no parking signs could be effective and they could not be because not everybody's by them.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I think, I mean, that, it's an existing issue, so it's kind of a secondary issue to the proposed school. Um, we would hope that the, you know, reconfigured, the separation of parent pickup and drop off from school buses might provide more onsite storage for pickup and drop off and maybe they'd be, I'm an optimist, you know, they'd be less likely to park across the street. Um, it's not an unusual problem and certainly it can be enforced with no parking signs.
To follow up on Cassie, traffic on Maple Street's a disaster when school gets out. There's just nowhere to go. And I think that's one of the reasons they're parking on Melwood. U-turn and you're on Westwood and away from the traffic. And I don't know if that, there's any way to solve that. I really don't. You're talking about reeducating the people and I I agree with the no parking signs. I think that should be a requirement. At least to try and stem the problem of all that parking, because I have seen it that way.
Thank you.
You really need to go sit in the parking lot and student parking lot now.
Yeah.
When school gets out and just go through the line and go through the queues and see what happens.
Hmm.
It absolutely needs no parking signs on Melwood, absolutely.
Because the old added, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Um, they all don't show up at the same time, but they're all leaving at the same time.
They're all leaving.
And everybody wants to get out as quick as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what causes, I mean, the traffic with the rotary, you're coming down.
Right.
You're in a gridlock.
Yeah, pickup and drop off each have their own characteristic.
Yes, they do.
As, you know, uh, drop pickup, they're arriving, you know, in waves, but they they build.
Yes.
To a, to a critical map.
Everybody wants to be first.
Once school releases and then they're all leaving at the same time. And that, you know, speaks to what we were talking about, although that was a morning issue of traffic coming out and stacking onsite and waiting. The idea is that the site accommodates that and it dissipates over a short period of time, which is common for a school operation. You you can't solve the fact that you have a huge influx of traffic.
I I agree with that.
The intent is to accommodate them onsite to the greatest.
Right, you're trying to mitigate existing issues. That's why I think, I'll go back to saying again, no parking signs on Melwood, I think should should happen.
Has it been considered how many parents are traditionally are each school you're picking up and how long that road is now? Because it's, school is considerably further back, right?
Right.
Is that, is that pickup aisle long enough to accommodate blank cars, which there's traditionally this many children being picked up? Because now I'm sure it's too.
That was, yeah, that, I mean, that was all part of the evaluation in the schematic design phase. We looked at, you know, existing demand and storage and reconfiguration and separating pickup drop off from school buses. That was all part of that equation. I don't have the specific numbers, but it's all considered in the schematic.
In the current situation, if you park five school buses in that horseshoe, there's no room for cars.
That's just it.
And that's where theirs were.
Big difference and and it's gonna require retraining some parent behavior.
You're a hundred percent correct.
And certainly no parking signs on Melwood will help do that.
Yeah. Still gonna have a bit of a backup when the school buses leave the loop and exit out onto uh the eastern entrance and exit onto Maple Street. You're gonna have all the students trying to get out at the same time. I mean, a lot of times the students are leaving before the buses actually get full and leave. But I can see that being a problem.
That was.
In the morning, I don't see it being much of a problem because the buses just come in and they go out. But when they all leave at once, the whole world stops.
Yeah.
And the buses are first.
And if those, yeah, and if those, if those two streams do mix, there may need to be some people by the school um, to prioritize the buses and make sure the students exiting understand, you know, the buses leave first.
They they understand.
So.
Oh, yeah. The buses don't let you out, believe me.
They don't, they don't let you out.
No, it's not an inch between them.
Oh, okay, all right. How's that?
This is better though.
So, so.
This is definitely better.
Proposed driveway, if you look at table one.
It's a west end.
Mm-hmm.
The proposed driveway for twenty twenty-seven, it says it rates at an S.
Yeah.
Right, that was, that was what Matt had talked about where.
There's no.
There's some, there's, there's some queuing of vehicles exiting the proposed driveway, um, waiting for a gap in traffic on Maple Street. Um, we expect that that would dissipate quickly and there's adequate storage within the proposed driveway um, so that they aren't going to impede the school parking. They're just waiting to exit, you know, line up.
Currently an F and it's gonna go.
Because it doesn't exist yet. That's why it's not here, but.
So.
That's for the afternoon. In the morning, it will rate at an F. In the afternoon, it'll improve to a D.
Okay.
It's a definite improvement.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And so this shows the the um eastern driveway, um, a crosswalk re- restripped here, uh, an RFB proposed here. Um, similar to the others, except instead of having the two sets on each side of the intersection, there's just one facing each direction at a single crosswalk. And so, um, you know, this works well on the left side of the approach, the west side of the approach. Um, expecting that there's a heavier right turn exiting traffic, um, so there won't be as much conflict between turning vehicles, pedestrians, again, the RFB will illuminate. Uh, folks exiting from that driveway would see it and obviously would see the pedestrian and are supposed to stop the pedestrian. So this helps kind of formulate. And the other critical piece about these crosswalks and the RFBs and is the internal sidewalk connections all connect to this. Today, we hear about um students going across the school, the church property. Um, this kind of consolidates them onto walkways that bring them to the sidewalk. If they want to cross to the sidewalk, which is on the other side of the street, this gives them a logical place that connects the sidewalks that.
But who determines the timing, like how long the RFB, like sort of whatever it does?
We would do that as part of final design.
Okay.
So we would, you know, we typically calculate how long it takes someone to cross and that's programmed. Um, you can.
Size of the pavement.
Yeah, exactly, the road. So you can also program how often it can be activated. You can actually have like a lockout period, you know, so that it's not just constant activation. So.
Is there a.
That'll all be part of final design.
Is there a standard time that you guys base start with thirty seconds or and then go up or down, whatever? Is there?
There's a standard time for crossing um based on walking speed. And so you do the calculation based on the width.
Okay.
Um, three and a half feet per second. So we would calculate it that way and we usually round up a couple of seconds. So depending on how that calculation comes up, we don't want it to be excessively long. Because what happens then is the pedestrian pushes the button, the RFB comes on, it's flashing, they cross, it stays flashing. And the drivers that come through here, they come up to this thing and they see it flashing and there's no one there and they're less likely to adhere to it. So we really want to keep it tight, you know, to coin a phrase, um, based on the need. So, and that's always something that can be adjusted to. If it's something that the town discovers later that it's not long enough or it's too long, it can be adjusted some. So this is the east entrance. Um, the other thing we'll talk about is school zone and this goes back to the question earlier about um speed. So today, there are some schools, there are some school signs out there. They're faded, they're outdated. Um, the kind of spread of the school because of the two driveways is not really a well-defined school zone. The other thing is that Massachusetts regulations that define school zones up until very recently didn't consider high schools for school zones. You weren't allowed to sign a school zone for high school. That's changed recently. And so we're able to sign it properly based on the MUTCD and based on mass standards as school zone. And so what you see here is on each approach, a sign, typical school crossing sign fluorescent yellow-green that says school zone. And then right after that is speed limit sign. It defines the school's speed limit at twenty um, and shows times. Those times can be set as needed um based on the school um arrival and dismissal times. And then markings, there's a school marking in the road in conjunction with that first sign, uh, which is hard to see, but that black mark in the road is a school marking, where it's a school across the lane. And so this really will help define the school zone for approaching traffic in both directions. And that's the end of our traffic. We'll turn it back over to the rest of the team.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Obviously, we get into public questions. We're happy to answer questions on traffic.
So, um, maybe if we just switch it up a little bit, I know there are people here who might have questions about the traffic. So go to it. So can we just, uh, just open it up to anyone in the audience who might have a question on traffic and wants to be heard? You can come forward. If not, we'll just move on to the next item. Okay, next item. Thanks.
Great.
No one.
I haven't seen any hands up.
Again, my name's Dory Brooks from Jones Woods at Architects and I I imagine that these images are already familiar. Um, but just to give you a quick overview of the elevations that you're going to see in the new school. Um, this uh front image here is showing you the arrival moment of the school. Uh, our intent here was to combine two different materials in the exterior cladding of the building. Um, the lower level would be a traditional modular unit brick with two tones. Um, and the upper level, um, which is surrounding the larger community spaces of the building is a a warm metallic um cladding. And this combination of materials is spread about throughout the front elevation of the building. Um, at the rear of the building, the academic wings are entirely brick clad, um, and uh, and more uniform. Um, the overall plan, I'm gonna go fairly quickly because I know everyone's probably already seen these and they aren't as germane to the the committee's work. Um, but just to give you again, an overall understanding of the building, that that uh, as a security measure in schools today, we really aim to bring students into a primary entrance. Um, there are ultimately uh two entrances that we imagine will be heavily used by students in the in the arrival and dismissal. The front main entrance, as well as the entrance that separates the pool and the school, which accesses uh towards the student parking area and the bus loop. Um, both, all of, all the entrances are security controlled. Um, from the front of the school, you can see that we've we've designed the school to put the gymnasium and the auditorium towards the front because those will be most heavily used by the community and kept the academic wings to the back um, so that uh the front spaces can be utilized by the community after hours. Um, there's a a third entrance that's critical. It's just the district offices, which are also in the school. So they have their own entrance, again, with um control, with a receptionist buzzer to allow people in after school hours start. Um, and and that's consistent across uh both of those entry points. Yeah.
Question, using the district office entry, will that gain you access to the school as well?
Uh, no, you'd have to be buzzed from by the staff there into the school.
Okay, so there will be access as long as you're buzzed in?
Yes, you're buzzed into, you you enter.
You're gonna be buzzed in twice.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the same in the main school entrance. Yeah, um, additionally, um, there's a a a point at the pre-K that is only accessible during those morning hours.
Right, I I understand that.
Have to come in through.
Right, okay, thank you.
Um, uh, and then this also shows you again, the second floor of the academic wing um for the classrooms. And then third, just wanted to share a little bit of an interior understanding of the school to show you those major assembly spaces. The auditorium, this is still in design, um, the central spine of the school that takes you past the auditorium to the cafeteria. Um, two sections of cafeteria, one is low and then opens up higher, um, that looks out towards the wooded area behind and then the community pool. Again, these are all um spaces that are still in design, but just to give you an understanding of the of the major assembly spaces. Any questions on the the architecture?
Then this is just a quick touch on utilities. Um, you know, we've met with CPW um throughout the design of the project to get their input and 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 lead to the to the design we have. Um, this diagram, the um colors represent water, sewer, uh, and electric. Um, so the water will be uh tapped off of an existing feed at a meter um from from uh Maple Street. Come in, loop around the building, um, several hydrants around the building and then will also connect back to Norton to make a redundant loop. Um, several hydrants around the building and then will also connect back to Norton to make a redundant loop. Um, provide better, um, redundancy and, and, and pressure. Um, and also help the, the Norton Street neighborhood as well with, with the same. Uh, sewer, um, will be going by gravity out to Norton Street, right now it goes, um, to the top to like Camp Berry, Berry Road, I believe. Um, so now it's gonna go down to Norton Street, um, and that's by gravity. Um, the concession stand will have a small, uh, pump chamber, um, it's just a little too far away. And then the electric will come in from that eastern, uh, entrance off Maple, come down, essentially the main just of that is coming down the eastern side and then comes in at the loading dock and there's some electrical equipment outside. Dock. That's, uh.
School air conditioning?
Yes. Finally.
So we have a letter here from Bruce Feeny. Who is the, uh, what's Bruce's title?
Superintendent of Public Works.
Superintendent of Public Works. Dated May third, twenty twenty four, I'm sure you've seen this.
Uh, May third, like a week ago?
Like a week ago?
I haven't seen it.
Oh. So it's their comments on the site plan.
Okay.
And there are, I'm kind of surprised it didn't get shared with you.
Yeah.
There are twenty-two items that they wish to have addressed. So I'm sure you'll do them all, right?
We can talk to them, sure.
Yeah. You seen this?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk to them or is there anything unusual or?
This must not have been forwarded over, a lot of them are basic detail changes.
Yeah.
They use concrete for a collar when it should have been by two minutes, these kinds of things.
Okay, so I, I would, I mean, we normally, if we get letters like this, the planning board, we normally say site plan approval dependent upon, you know, the developer meeting all the requirements in the letter.
Right.
You're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Used to do that for me, Russ.
I know, I know. I was waiting for your name, I said, we used to get one, you can have mine if you want.
Yeah.
Uh, you don't need to address that right now. I mean, I, I kind of glanced through it, I, I don't really see anything major here, I think it's just everything that has to, these are.
The small details.
The small details and I'm sure more will come as the project.
Stuff like that, yeah.
Unfolds.
Yeah, we, we can address some and.
Okay, yeah. Have to be. Yeah. Are you all set?
Uh, one more slide, this is stormwater, so we, we, uh, went up in front of the conservation commission two weeks ago and had approval for the project. But, uh, just the design goals were to meet the Massachusetts stormwater policy standards. Include some, uh, low impact development, uh, the bioretention areas. Um, porous pavement that loop around the back is porous pavement and then there's some, some parking up in the front that is, uh, porous, uh, pavers. And we have some infiltration, uh, as well, um, in a couple of areas and our water quality, um, volume design is, is one inch, which for the, uh, the state standards, that's the higher, it's either a half inch or an inch. Um, because of the good soils that are there and the hyper grade of the soils, um, we, we have to design for the one inch, so. And the peak flows are reduced, um, for the post-construction. So, and then this just is a diagram showing some of those LID elements, the bioretention areas. There's three across the front of, what's north of the uh, track stadium and then two kind of in front of the school there and then those, uh, parking spaces are the porous, uh, pavers, uh, and then porous pavements, asphalt pavement around the back of the school. Um, and then the recharge area in blue.
So I know it's out of order, so don't change the slide yet, so.
So that's, that's last slide.
So there was a slide, I can't remember who was up presenting it, but it was the timing of the construction.
Yep.
And so, um, if you want to pull that one back up, my question is for those people along Susan Street during the construction phase, what arrangements, oh, there you go, what arrangements are you taking to kind of buffer them from, you know, uh, construction debris, dust, you know, air quality, all that fun stuff.
Oh, yes.
Noise, because it does look like you're putting in a temporary roadway around all of that, so can you address that?
Sure, um, so there is that temporary roadway, um, we wanted to come off of.
Is it, is it pavement, is it?
Sure, so it's, it'll have fence, um, on both sides with scrim, so it'll, can't see through it, so it'll be, uh, chain link fence with a.
How high?
Eight feet.
Eight feet high, okay.
And it'll, it'll, um, follow the road on both sides, so the, so the white on the inside, the field, that'll be used by the school.
Yeah.
So it's separated from the school and then it's also separated from the outside, the, the neighbors, so it, so, and then it is paved.
And, and how long do you anticipate that to be in place?
That will be in place from, uh, this summer, um, say like July first to um, the end of phase one, which is.
All of twenty six.
All of twenty six.
We can't hear you.
But they're in the new school, it'll be a swan.
Two years, so essentially, okay. All right, just, hold, hold on, we'll get, you'll get a chance, yes, you will. All right. Okay. All right, so you're gonna be using the west, the west entrance to the school for the.
So that'll be a split entrance, so it is widened and there'll be a loop for, for, uh, parents and then there'll be a.
Construction.
Created with fence for the.
Okay, that's just gonna create, create a mess. Done, because that's that bad point.
Yeah.
You're gonna have large trucks.
Right.
Entering, exiting at different times during the day, so. But that's gonna be.
So there will.
Called afterward.
Restrictions of they can't come in and out during like the drop off and pickup.
Okay, so. So normal construction hours are what?
Seven to three usually.
Seven to three? Seven to three, five days, five days a week, three thirty.
Seven thirty, seven, three thirty, it'll be five to six days a week.
Okay.
All right, thank you. You can, so I will open to the public, anyone who would like to come up, be heard, ask a question. The floor is, floor is now for you to come and do that, so. And you just, just because it's procedure, you need to write your name, let us know who you are.
Yes, my name is Jim Calibres, I live right on the corner there on Susan Street.
So you need to ask the question?
Yes, my question is.
Of the committee and then we just need to send it back.
Question I have is the access road that's going through, what decided it being there? Were there alternatives looked at and if so, why weren't alternatives looked at? It's probably two feet off my property line.
Okay.
Maybe three feet.
So he's asking if there were alternatives to that design for the road, temporary roadway. Um, and did you look at them, why did you end up with this?
Do you have the other slides?
Uh, slides, sure. Um, we don't, we, there weren't any alternatives looked at, um, we don't have slides of all those alternatives, so.
I, I can't say that, you know.
Can you stand up so people can hear you?
So there was the, the option of coming from Norton, which would have created problems for the Norton neighborhood, which was already trying to minimize.
That's also, he's also in the Norton.
Yeah, he's in that area, yes.
The other alternative was to come off of, uh, the east entrance.
Right.
Would have entangled the student traffic flow as well, so this was viewed as the least troublesome way to, to do this without impacting the parking schools. Not an easy.
What, what's the distance from the property line where the road is? I looked at the plans it will take, it probably runs right against my property line.
And line, so you're talking about the fence.
The road.
Surrounding.
The road.
Fence, the road itself.
The road itself has got to be two feet from my property. I work from home.
If you're gonna respond, you have to please stand and.
Yes.
You, not you, they're trying to respond, I think. Yeah.
I mean, I'd just like to know what, like I said, the alternatives, why they didn't use the alternatives, I mean, it's still impacting the neighborhood, it runs right behind all the homes.
Right.
Third, an eight foot fence, which it's gonna look like crap, but I mean, what type of vehicles are gonna be rolling behind our house?
Does anyone want to address?
I mean, I don't, I just. Did anybody look into this, I mean.
Oh, we're asking a question. So.
Should be a question people at home.
Yeah, it's not long, sorry. That's okay, it's okay. My name is Mark Bogan, Fontaine, Senior Superintendent, so we looked at many things, I'm, I'm a town resident for thirty-one years. I've, I've lived in this town, we looked at many, excuse me, many options coming around, like Dory said, coming around the east. Into implementing the students, we looked at coming behind the football field, but with the wetlands and the buffers zone, we couldn't do that. Originally, they wanted to come through Norton Street, I'm like, there's no way we're coming through Norton Street.
Why couldn't you just take a hard left and come the other side of soccer field?
Because the, the, just we'd lose the soccer field.
You can move soccer field over the same distance.
There's not enough room for buffer between the building and where the water lines are and where all these, the, um, there's, there's roadway, there's walkways, there's access to the building. You have to have Egress out, you have to fire department, I mean, all that goes into consideration. We talked about all that.
The roads are going by the Egress anyways, if this makes sense.
But not next to the building.
There's no exit on the exit building. All windows, all classrooms windows.
They, they can come out the other side by, by, um, the guidance.
Right where the road comes this way and there's an exit over here.
No matter what we do with construction, we're gonna, we're gonna interfere with somebody, we're, we're.
Even if you went through the center of the soccer field and this is going right, I mean, this road has got to be two feet from my property line. I'm gonna have trucks rolling by, I mean, what type of trucks are going by there, cement truck?
Yeah. The other, the main, the main thing was coming right through Norton Street.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, your value property should go up when the school is done.
We can't get into that.
We're not getting into that. I mean, I was there, I mean, coming in through the other entrance, I mean, where they're building, you could shoot in that back entrance right across the parking lot, you're there, instead of looping all, I, I'm not being, I'm not being, yes, I'm just, if you had really looked.
We, we looked in, because you can't just look at the overall pictures, you gotta look at what's under the ground, right? So the reason we took the front of the, the front of the building, we're making that all parking. The reason we're doing that is because during the summers, we have to reconfigure the parking lot, move, move the sewer, move the gas, move the water. All that stuff has to happen concurrently, so we have to give this, the, um, excuse me, the faculty a place to park. So as you keep going through that, the, really the only way was to go around the school. We're taking all the fields from them and as you know, this town is very tough to have fields, so if we took that soccer field and that baseball field and they'd have nothing for three years, four years, because you couldn't even go on it till two twenty-eight, until after girls year, excuse me. So we looked at a lot of different axes and this was the easiest and less, um, first, I, I know, I understand that the six houses or seven houses along Sioux Street, it was gonna, it's gonna impact that corner, we'll try to be as impactful as, as we, or less impactful as we can, but this was like the best thing that we came up with after all this things we went through, left and right.
So you did a study looking at moving the soccer field?
We looked at study going through this, getting rid of the soccer field, but then now the school has no other fields. There's no JV, oh, the, the gym classes, if we take all those fields, the students are suffering for four years. We gave them as mu, as it is, we, you know, take the JV field, we snuck another soccer field in the back and soccer, football, lacrosse, field hockey, all those practices, you know, youth football, the town, direct department.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the study showing you can't move the field over and run the road by the school. If you did, I'd like to see it, I mean. It must be somewhere, you must have analyzed it.
It's all internal, how we try to, try to make this a less impactful and again, the day, there's a lot of money involved in the town, so it's all budgeting and everything else. Um, there's a lot of things that go into it.
If there's a study showing that it doesn't work that way, I mean, should be somewhere, and we're already spending one hundred and seventy million dollars on a school?
Okay, thank you.
But I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other question I had too is the baseball field, I know they said they're putting fences up, how close is that baseball field, the fence, to the property line?
Who wants to touch that one?
I don't know how much consideration it was given there.
Yeah, the distance?
Well, it looks like they're doing a line of trees.
Yeah.
Or some rubber pies or something there. Yeah. Can you put a berm there?
Yeah, so the.
Big berm. I'm just curious how close it is to, I mean, some of the plans I saw, it looked like it was right on the, right on the property.
Yeah, so the, the outfield fence, it varies as you can see, but the closest point it will be, I believe it's twenty-one feet from the property line, um, and that, again, the, the distance of the outfield, I can tell you, I believe it's three hundred and fifteen feet from home plate to like the left field corner, so then it would get longer as you're going along that outfield arc. And then you'd have the additional distance on that. We're proposing six foot height fence around the perimeter of the outfield. And then we're planting in those proposed evergreen trees and, you know, we could always densify them in one area if there was a particular pinch point, uh, that needed to be addressed. So those are the, those are the distances and then there's existing, there's existing trees and an existing hedge along that property line too, which wouldn't, which would, which would remain, uh, I believe those trees are on private property anyway. Uh, so those would remain and we would just be augmenting it with the, with those additional evergreen trees. And then as you, as you get to likes, I mean, I guess it would be left center field and further to the east towards right field. Now you're also, not only is there that vegetated buffer, but you're also hitting into a hill.
Yeah.
Because that'll be, um, we're actually gonna be furthering the cut slope a little bit just to get these fields, just to get these fields in, so.
Okay, my last point, and I believe you mentioned it. Parking, how long a walk is it there? We face the traffic now, is there any consideration to stopping people from making our, our neighborhood a parking lot? They do it now.
Yeah.
They, so, they don't want to walk, so they park there.
Right, yeah, so, uh, that is really, it's what they refer to as a rule of the road and traffic signage for no parking and so forth is a matter of the town council. So, the town manager is here, he can take your concern to.
Not even signs of enforcement, there have been signs back there for years, that parking was ever supposed to be used, parent parking.
It would be the town council.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a point to.
Yeah, yeah.
Our neighborhood could turn it over. Yeah, yeah.
We did, I, I.
Taken.
I do want to just speak to the fact that we did have conversations and, um, about that, our understanding is that there is no parking allowed on Norton Street, it, by, by rule. There's no parking on Norton Street and that was one of the reasons that we, two things, number one, we didn't want to make a big parking lot there because we didn't want to encourage parking back there. And number two, that's another reason why we provided, you can see that hammerhead in there so that, you know, it's to discourage people from using driveways to turn around, they could just pull in and back out.
So you know the old saying, you win some and you lose some. So by taking out that driveway from Norton that goes in currently by the LCAT offices and then even further.
By the way back.
That's where a lot of people park now to use the athletic fields. So essentially, you take that out, relocate them over to the thirty that are near the administration, the faculty and the students. So that's a much longer walk.
Yeah.
So Norton, Norton may lose the, that traffic in the morning for faculty and staff and others, but I don't know anyone over my, anyone, certainly no one older than me is gonna walk, you know, that far. They're gonna park on Norton Street, on Susan Street to go see their kids' games, but that's up to you guys to have to deal with and guys have to administer, but. Okay, so you win some, you lose something.
Yeah, um, so someone could get an answer as far as the study they did on the road?
Yeah, they've got your name and hopefully they will take care of that.
Yeah.
Yep. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Colin Temple, I live at eight Susan Street. Not happy to see this. You have, I have to sign in, I guess?
Please, yep.
Have to take my gloves off, sorry. I'm very upset about these plans as far as that construction road within feet of my property, okay? It's a paved road, is it gonna get removed?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so it's not gonna become any walkway.
Temporary, yeah.
I see.
Yep.
And Jim's already mentioned about parking on Bari or Berry, um, which is a disaster as it is now. There are no speed signs anywhere, is that another town thing?
Yeah, it's a town council thing, yeah.
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 Okay. Um, as far as the crosswalks with the new parking lots and on Maple, are they gonna be raised like Long Meadow did? Anybody? We don't, I don't like to call them a speed bump because I don't.
Right now, we are not proposing any raised crosswalks, so what we are doing is that, um, basically up at the front of the school, that's gonna be a flush condition, so. So it's gonna be a, you know, a six inch height curb, let's say, as you enter the site with that sidewalk right along the edge. And then when you get to that first little stop line where you see the three crosswalks there, it's gonna transition down to flush in front of the school. So. Oh, on Maple?
On Maple.
Okay, I, I apologize. Um, on Maple, no, we are proposing curb.
Line that slide.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry. Let me go back one. Actually, you know. Okay, okay, that's good.
Um, yeah.
So no, the, the, these would, these, and I, I can let, um, um, traffic speak to it a little bit more, but they're proposed to be at grade crosswalks painted, um, with curb cut ramps, traditional curb cut ramps with the technical warning surfaces as you enter onto the, onto the right.
It's just, it's a good deterrent as far as, I mean, Marshall Street is a disaster. They speak there, and I understand your concern, you're on Melwood, is that? Try walking on, on Marshall Street in the afternoon.
I know, it's the same.
And some of the biggest offenders actually are, um, school personnel. Who almost hit me yesterday morning, going at least forty, forty-five miles an hour, um, to get to the parking lot off of Norton.
But that won't exist pretty soon.
Yeah, well, it exists now, so.
That's.
Um, my main concern also, I wanted to ask, how high are these proposed trees you're going to plant? Who's gonna take care of them? Who's gonna clean up the trash between them and my property?
So that's.
I mean, it's all, you know.
That's the town's responsibility to maintain all of that.
Oh, goodie.
So, yep.
Okay.
We are, we are, um.
Do you know what type of trees they're gonna be?
Well, that, no, that's a good, that's a very good question. Uh.
Arborvitae grow the fastest.
They're, they are an option. The one issue that we have seen with arborvitae is that deer tend to ravage them. So we're gonna look at a few different species, uh, we haven't picked species yet. Um, but there are a number of different, you know, native species that we are gonna consider. Um, hopefully some that are a little bit more deer tolerant. Uh, and then we're, we're looking at the, I, I can't remember off the top of my head what we proposed, but we were not proposing a five to six foot height tree. I will tell you that, it was, it was tall.
I'm still gonna see the fence, a six foot fence.
I believe that the trees at the time of planting will be more than six feet tall.
That'll be good.
And we can make that a condition of the site plan approval.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Um, to say the least, they gonna be on those fence side, your property, or are they gonna be planted on my property line?
On the town.
School property.
School property.
Hey, so they're gonna trim them on my side too, right?
Yeah.
Okey dokey.
Well, I will tell you this, that we, that, that's another very good point that you bring up. It is the responsibility of the landscape architect to select a tree species that is appropriate for the use. So it is not appropriate to put a white pine there, or something that's gonna be seventy five feet wide when it gets.
Or sheds anything, actually, please.
So we will, we'll, um, we'll be very careful in the species selection, I can.
Well, I appreciate that, since I've worked hard trying to get rid of overgrowth as it is, um.
Completely understand.
I, I just am not pleased with a lot of what I see here as far as my property line. And I guess it's a done deal, but as long as that roadway is gonna be removed, save some of it.
Yep.
Um, as far as the seven to three, three thirty of big trucks and cement, mm, six days a week, thanks, gentlemen. That's really appreciated too.
Anyone else in the audience like to be heard?
Sure.
Uh, Mark?
Yep.
Um, so I'm, I'm hearing what they're saying, I'm just trying to play both sides here. So the, you, the reason you can't move, swap the soccer field and the road, is there's utilities that run there now?
There's also utilities, but also in order to make the trucks, the, the turn, it's two pipe trucks, turn, yeah, protect the trailer, strike the trucks, let's see the trucks coming in. Because originally, they were, you know, the plane was to come to Norton, I mean, you're the town resident, you couldn't play.
Just thinking, the, the time.
And you, you'd lose the soccer field for one, because to, to make that turn, come around, there's no way trucks would make that turn.
It would.
Yeah, and took the soccer field out, out, out of commission.
Out completely.
Out completely, because you can't, because it's, it's so close now with the, with the perimeters and with the, the rain changes. We looked at all that, and going with the school already taking all the other fields, you're actually baseball right away, half the tennis courts, all those areas in the other. Talking with school and everything else, if they lose everything, where are they going? Now they're, they're going different towns and using stuff like that, so.
Think of the cost savings and the time savings by cutting off that whole run, you could come straight through, right? But.
At the end of the day, it's, it's, you're really not, you're saving, not, not a lot to make that difference in there. Want to keep the road twenty feet off the building, which is just essentially adding another twenty feet that, that pushes.
You gotta find a twenty feet somewhere.
That pushes your field up.
Yeah, yeah.
That accident.
Yeah, you need to, yeah. Well, that's the other thing, it's the, the emergency vehicle access.
For access to the existing school, why is that line where we're held?
Correct.
We give them access twenty. Okay.
Any other questions? If not, uh, like a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, any further discussion? So all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no one, so we close the public hearing. So, um, if, if I could, so I'd like to. I'd like to.
Okay. They're gone.
Gone, done. Okay, so, uh, just to, uh, get discussion going, would someone make a motion?
Move to approve the site plan review. Move to approve the site plan review for the demolition of an existing East Long Meadow High School and construction of a new high school building and associated parking, driveways, utilities and fields at one eighty Maple Street with the additional.
Well, let me get to that, yeah, get to that. So do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, so for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Were, were you gonna add some conditions?
With the conditions presented tonight by the Superintendent of Public Works, okay?
Um, also, um, I'd like to, the last speaker, so, uh, that no plantings along the backside, uh, along Susan Street be no less than eight feet in the beginning. That the construction be, you know, Monday through Saturday, seven to four, okay? Um, I think that's an appropriate one.
Yep.
I think that we should just, um, it gives, can't make it a condition, but certainly ask Mr. Christiansen to pass along the, our interest in with regards to no parking, at least no parking along Melwood and.
Norton.
Norton. Norton. And Berry, thank you.
Susan.
I thought you said there were some on Susan already, but if not.
We'll just go.
All right, Susan, that immediate area.
Yep.
It would be, I mean.
Yeah.
They're in the traffic rules of regs, you cannot park on those streets.
Okay.
Already.
So you'll have a discussion with the appropriate authorities about enforcement?
Yes, I shall.
Okay, thank you.
No sign on Melwood.
Yes.
Add a sign.
Okay, um. Okay.
Hi, so I am a resident on Lori Lane, and so I have similar concerns. Um, one is the, um, are the trees gonna remain and is the fence going to remain that is already there?
On Lori Lane?
Oh.
All the stone bottom.
At the bottom.
Oh, in the back. Really, maybe all around.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is any? Yeah, Lori Lane is to the south.
Correct, yes. So Lori Lane, those existing trees and tho, and, uh, any fences back there, there were no proposed changes down there. The idea is to keep the, the development on the inside of that tree line. Uh, now, on the west side, along Susan Street.
She's not addressing that.
Oh, okay.
She's just addressing that here.
Okay.
And then, so the other.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The other part of my question is, is that the fence doesn't run the entire length on this end? So people cut through the yards all the time, so with those fields, I think we're gonna have a similar issue with cars parking here and cutting through as well.
So the chairman of the school committee is shaking his head like you're going to fix that?
Figured it out. All right.
So they were, the, the chair of the school committee is here, he's indicated that the school, well, school department slash school committee will address that concern for you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Could, could you say your address for the record?
Sure, it's forty-two Lori Lane.
Okay, so we, we've talked about no parking, where there's signage, Mr., we're gonna ask Mr. Christiansen to, um, address enforcement. But we are recommending to the town council that they, um, address or actually put in no parking for an established length to be decided by DPW for Melwood. We've talked about the construction hours, we've talked about the, the greenery along the Susan Lane or Susan Street, uh, properties. Most of that.
So can we, can we follow, I know the Susan, Susan Street, people would ask, going around from Lori, is anything gonna change on that side or is it just additions? Yes, from the lady's question. So right now, I'll just look, so we addressed Lori Lane, so let's just go right up the west property line there. You can see, there's not much of a vegetated buffer right now between that, that residence at the, let's say, the bottom right corner of Norton Street, just below the blue asterisk. So we're proposing again some screening, evergreen trees there to just beef that buffer up a little bit. Then there is a pretty large area of, it's like mostly sumac, it's a lot of scrub vegetative vegetation, but it's pretty dense. We're gonna save a good portion of that, some of it, just to get that baseball field in, we gotta pull back a little bit, but, but the major stuff in there will stay, and then we're gonna keep most of that vegetated buffer. And then as you move up, you can see we're plugging a few holes that we observed with some evergreen trees, though, those will have to be field located. But the, but the big mature existing trees, uh, you know, the plan is to keep those. There might be, need to be some pruning, because one of them is dropping a lot of branches right now, so we want safety, so there might be some pruning. But all the evergreen hedges and things like that along that property line, you know, we would keep. Um, the only thing is up at that, when you get up closer to Berry Road right now, actually, one of the things I love about that property line is that it's sort of, there's just some scattered plant beds that sort of loosely define that property line out there, it's very park-like, it's very nice. So we'll have to work with the neighborhoods just to cite, properly cite those trees. And if it means that the private properties would prefer that some of that deciduous material, like the lilacs, come out, I'm not saying that they do, I'm just saying if they, okay, then we would have to fit those evergreens in, you know, amongst them and, and make that work, and that can all be field located.
So we've closed the public hearing.
Yeah.
And we've had a motion.
They're gonna get a study on showing us that they did not find an alternative, why not, apart from that road? The parking lot, by the football field, I get the warning tonight, but I won't see that they actually seriously looked at it, that's gonna get me in my ass.
Would, would someone be able to provide a?
Looking this out my whole life, I was selling my house tomorrow.
Yep, so would someone be able to provide an analysis of what you looked at with respect to the construction road to them?
Yeah, there was, there were PowerPoints internally reviewed.
Okay, good, so if you want, you can forward them to Rebecca Lisi here at Town Hall, and she can distribute them to you when she gets them. Okay, any other conditions, questions from the board? Hearing, hearing none, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, it doesn't, so this item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a lot on the table.
That's right, I'll, I'll, I'll sign as I can sign.
Go ahead, and then I just wanted to.
Are we?
I'm not done yet.
No, no.
I'm not done yet. Well, real happy people sitting back over there. Kid that came up, he was a woman. She, she wasn't, she was not happy.
She was. Who's gonna find her happy? Huh? Yeah, I know. That's my song.
That's just crazy.
I know. Sixty-seven. There's water.
There's a lot of water.
Forty, you're fine, yeah.
Hundred ten. How are you, buddy?
Good to see you, yeah.
Looking well?
Yes.
As far as can be expected. How are you?
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good to see you.
All right, so, uh, we still have business to conduct, so, um, we didn't really adjourn the meeting, so the conditions, take them from, uh, the meeting.
See you, buddy.
Watching Elcat.
I, I can, I just wanna see if I have this, so it's the twenty-two questions from DPW, town manager and ELPD to enforce the parking on the Susan. I'm recommending to town council, uh, no parking on Melwood.
On both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else that I'm missing?
The construction to take place, uh, seven to four, Monday through Saturday, that no plantings be less than eight feet in height.
I said the fence is gonna be like eight feet, so we're good there.
Yeah.
We would've made it seven thirty.
All right. So the next item is, uh, planning and development, uh, staff report.
I was very happy to announce that we made an offer that was accepted, and we have a, uh, new planner, director of planning, starting on, uh, May twentieth.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
So I, that's a big smile, yeah.
Note also that the Central Town District Steering Committee is having an IT social, it's a meet and greet, um, that's tomorrow, come toward us six at the depot at Grand Central Station on Maple Street, six before Maple Street. And then the next, um, community engagement forum for the Central Town District is on May twentieth, that'll be in the auditorium from six to eight P M.
Okay, so with that, can I like to ask our ex-official member his thoughts on town center district to date? I, I sat way in back during the first session, yeah, so.
So, uh, candidly, I, I think the R forty is, uh, too early, I don't think we need it. I think we, I think we all backed into it as I was sitting next to our council chair. Um, I said, do, it doesn't make sense why we're not fixing the zoning, we're going ahead with doing R forty when it, it doesn't really produce a whole lot, it just kind of restricts us and adds more restrictions onto it. Uh, so I had concerns there, I think the first step we needed to do, and I think we all kind of backed into it, was fixing the zoning first, getting the zoning cleaned up. Uh, contrary to what some people thought, I vocal said, if you don't think there's a lot of undeveloped land that's zoned industrial in this town that could be turned into another warehouse, I, I don't know what town you guys are living in, because there's a lot of stuff that's a mess, and I think that needs to be cleaned up and then revisit the R forty stuff. Um, that's the sentiment I got walking away from it.
So thank you for participating.
There was a lot of people not in favor of it. I, and I also felt that people did come out on the understanding that we already approved it, similar like this, like this was gonna happen.
Yep.
It's just a fact. Just asking questions here, that was it, but.
Lots more to go, so. So I am unable to be here physically on, uh, our next meeting. Um, I think you've, all, I've let all of you know about that in early, early March.
Yes.
Uh, but there was another meeting scheduled for May. Um, so, uh, there's about a ten percent chance that I might be able to do it, uh, by Zoom. I won't know until I actually get to Chicago and know what my full schedule is for work, uh, so Cassie, it's all yours.
Fantastic.
Have fun. Um, but just.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
But after that one, I will not be here on June eighth.
I will be back.
There you go.
All right. I'll get it, I'll get a report, I'll get a report from Pete on how you did. Here to help, Cassie, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna be sick that day too, when I think about it.
Pete don't show up, we're all set.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, I know we previously talked about it, but I would like to bring it back to the board again, um, drones. Any, like, we don't have anything about drones anywhere.
I could find some sample language for you to consider.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then if you'd like it, we can go through the process of filing it.
Okay, I would like to revisit that.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, one more thing.
Oh, yes, yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I took to heart some of the comments that were made about the underlying zoning. Um, and I put in an expression of interest for a one-stop community grant that would do a full review of the town bylaws, um, the use table where we're finding a lot of conflicts, and then also the zoning map. Um, so fingers crossed we get that grant, um, and we'll have some money to do that underlying review. Uh, but in the meantime, um, there, there's, uh, still a lot. There, there's uh, still a lot of options to look at for configuring the Central Town District, once we have the other pieces of zoning in place.
I think that, and that's, I think where I was trying to go, I'm just saying against the R four, I think it's, I think the zoning needs to be fixed first and that was kind of the theme, it's everybody like. Fix that problem, then look at the rest of it, but I don't know.
There's no need for any discussion until the zoning's changed, really. Basic entries, first thing.
To adjourn?
Show moved.
All in favor?